Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting the Germantown Board of Education Order at 7:05, and I ask that you join me in standing if you're able to say the Pledge of Allegiance and for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. An official meeting notification, Mr. Stausen.
Yes, public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Penn Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the GSDWI.org website, as well as cable TV Access Channel 96.
Thank you. Rule call, Mr. Byrne.
Sauber.
Here.
Medved.
Here.
Loth.
Here.
Borden.
Here.
I'm here.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Great, thank you. Item two, approval of agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item three, citizen comments. We didn't have anyone sign up today, but would anybody like to speak? Okay, moving on to item four, approval of the September 28, 2020 budget hearing and annual meeting minutes, September 28, 2020 Board of Education minutes, and September 28, 2020 closed session minutes.
Move to approve the September 28 budget hearing annual meeting, Board of Education, and closed session minutes.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item five, reports and information items, student representative report. Mr. Stausen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Soderbergh. I'll have Ms. Catalano, our 12th grade student rep, give her a report.
Hello.
Good evening.
Okay, so for Amy Bell, they've continued to follow COVID guidelines and adapt their curriculum to follow their new procedures, and they're excited to offer both in-person and virtual parent-teacher conferences in the upcoming weeks. Finally, they are still doing their best to keep the fun in their school for their students, and they've adapted how they will celebrate the fall season with fall parties that follow the new guidelines. At County Line, they began a virtual marathon for their students on October 5. They're encouraging their students to run, bike, or walk for 15 minutes a day to promote exercise and fun while recognizing students' dedication, hard work, and physical fitness accomplishments. County Line also completed their fourth annual delightful donuts on October 2. They thank all of the important men in their kids' lives that came out on this sunny brisk morning, and they even donated extra donuts and juice to the Germantown Police and Fire Departments. At Rockfield, they're focusing on the character trait empathy this month. Students will learn about empathy in the Rockfield News, books their teachers read, activities derived from the curriculum, purposeful people through their first virtual all-school assembly, which is scheduled on Wednesday, October 14. Rockfield is also thankful for the beautiful weather that they've been having, and it's allowed for some students to eat outdoors, and music and PE to be held outdoors. MacArthur is off and running into one of the most unique school years on record. Each day, they are looking to improve their processes, efficiencies, and learning whether they are face-to-face or virtual. To start off this year, they had an event called the Relationship Rodeo. During this event, both virtual and face-to-face students had a chance to meet with staff members, including former teachers in many cases, to share about themselves with fun questions. After each short discussion, staff would rotate to a new group. As an outdoor socially-distanced event, the MacArthur communities were finally able to see each other's smiles in a safe manner. Finally, this year, they'll be putting on a huge focus on using their writing to grow relationships and share their feelings, and to support this effort, they'll be implementing a fun and positive graffiti wall to share their writing. At Kennedy, the KMS students and staff continue engaging learning activities in the hybrid model. The cross-country team has hosted two meets and will have time trials this Tuesday at the high school track. Girls' basketball games are in full swing with home and away games with long follow schedules this week. Students involved in working on the 2020-2021 yearbook will have a virtual informational meeting this Wednesday, and the library has been hosting an October promotion, Masking Your Excitement for Reading, with students taking book selfies to enter into a drawing for weekly prizes. Thanks to all the students and staff who continue safe and healthy practice of masking and social distancing to keep things rolling along at KMS. And finally, at Germantown, they've continued to work together to follow COVID guidelines, and teachers have done an outstanding job of teaching their classes both online and virtually. The Boys and Girls varsity cross-country team ran in their conference meet on October 10 with many students beating their previous PRs. Boys volleyball and girls swim and dive both had their senior nights last week and are so thankful for their senior leaders on their respective teams. Girls volleyball finished up their regular season as tied for first in conference. Recently, seniors have been allowed to attend Germantown football and soccer home games, and socially-distanced students have been able to cheer on their teams through masks and continue to support each other. Many clubs have continued to have their first meetings, such as Japanese Club, Cups of Controversy, the BSU, and more. Finally, Student Council has been making an effort to make this school year just as exciting as others with a modified homecoming spirit week, as well as a COVID-friendly Halloween trick-or-treat wish week to make up for the postponed homecoming date. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, great job. You're more than welcome to stay, or if you want to go and do your studies, you can do that.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care. I love that. Moving on to item B, COVID expense report. Mr. Stausen.
Yep, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Alton Dorff and Mr. Nowak with the COVID expense report.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you can hear me or not. Oh, you're going to go over there.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, so Mike and I are here tonight to give you an update. I believe it was at one of our last board meetings or committee meetings that Mike and I are going to report to the board. Our goal is bi-monthly, if you'd like it monthly, we're more than welcome to do that, to update on what our COVID expenses have been. So I'm going to go over more of the supplies and the consumables, and then Mike will get into more detail on the personnel side. So right now, we're going to report from July 1 to September 30, and then we'll add to the list every time that we report out. So the items that I'm going to go through are invoices that we have received through September 30. So if we received them in October, but they were for September, they're not on my list quite yet. So our total so far is $37,000, which I think is pretty great on the supplies and consumable side. We have items that range from reusable masks, throwaway masks, face shields, surgical masks. We did buy foldable desk barriers. We did have the barriers for our secretarial or front-office staff produced. We bought some scrubs for the special ed department. We bought some distant learning resources for our online teachers. If you have detailed questions, Brenda might be able to answer those. But there's digital curriculum, Sunday system for online virtual teachers, CSOS subscriptions for online teachers, Redbird math licenses for online teachers, some cute computer cable cords, those type of things, and microphones for our online teachers. So this is all basically our initial. Hopefully, some of this will be used for a while, and you won't see these reoccurring costs as high as they are currently today. But as of right now, it's a little less than $37,000 on that end.
Okay. In regard to sub-costs, and that's primarily what I'm reporting on, I'm going to share three areas that we've looked at and tracked, and then after that, we'll talk a little bit about what those numbers mean relative to where we are in the year and what we're experiencing, obviously, with COVID. The first area is hourly sub-costs. By that, I mean situations where we might not have coverage in a building, and we have teachers covering classes. In that scenario, we have spent a total of $4,066 in the time period that we're looking at, which is, I think, was September 30. Of that, 60% of that cost was COVID-related, so 2,418 was COVID-related, and then the other 40% was just normal sort of subbing, 1,648. That number of 4,066, if we look at what was budgeted, and the fact that we've had 21 days, and we typically have about 175 to 176, I think technically this year we have 175.5 days, that 4,000 number for hourly subs is on par. It's appropriate. We feel good about that number. However, we need to point out that the beginning of the year relative to hourly subs typically is not a time where there's heavy sub-usage. So up to September 15, teachers aren't using personal days typically, you know, for whatever reason, September is a relatively calm month. So while we're happy with the number, we're a little concerned about what would be to come. And I think that's the case with everything we're going to share. The second area we wanted to talk about was teachers on call. In the time period, our total sub-cost was 13,682, but the COVID-related subs were 8,716. These are the day-to-day subs that are coming in to fill in typically when people are on like a quarantine, like a 10-day quarantine, those kinds of things. That number, that 13,000 number, because last year, if you remember, in the spring, we transitioned to teachers on call, our teachers-on-call data really was only about 20 days last year where we had teachers on call. That said, we still feel that this number is okay relative to what's been budgeted in terms of what Brittany has put together, but there's a lot of unknowns. The last area is what I would call long-term subs, and sometimes that's teachers that are over 45 days. Sometimes it's teachers that may be like three to four weeks where we need subs with a relative level of expertise in a given area or certification in a given area to maintain the level of, you know, educational integrity in the classroom. So that number, to date, we've spent 24,741 on that in that window. And I think what's important to note there is the front end for every school is, at this point, appears to be likely heavy. Now, as we get into December, January, February, who knows? If we have significant outbreaks, significant needs, if in January the law changes and there's another window open for 12-week leaves, or two-week leaves, we may have teachers that access those again. But we had many teachers who began the year on two-week leaves because a doctor had, you know, noted they should be out, or because of school, their kids' schools were closed. So that number is heavy, but it is in line with budget, and, you know, this is one of those things that on a day-to-day basis, we deal with these leaves. The tracking of it is complex in terms of how we code things. It's tricky in terms of how we make a sub work. By that, I mean in some situations, there's a lot of value in if a teacher is on quarantine, symptom-free, capable of doing work, being at home, teaching in virtually, with a sub of some kind on hand in the classroom. That said, we're becoming better at that. I think in the first couple weeks, we were learning how that might work. What we've realized as well is that DPI has said that the person in that classroom can be an aide. It doesn't need to be a sub necessarily. So we'll access that. We'll try to, I guess, take advantage of our resources in terms of people that might be available to help. So if a team, if a classroom has aide support, and that aide can be in there, that would eliminate the need for a sub in that scenario. So on the budget side, things seem to be in line. That's what we want. Brittany and I spoke this afternoon about this quite a bit, and it's very interesting to look through. We don't know what we're going to face, but we know that we've got to be prepared for anything. On top of that, I will point out that the sub pool is very shallow, as we've said on a number of occasions. That has nothing to do with Germantown. That's a metro area, if not regional, statewide, and maybe even a national type of phenomenon. What we're noticing now is that many subs who at the beginning of the year wanted to wait to see how things would go, we believe that now that they're seeing those trend lines continue upwards, they're making the decision that they don't want the sub. So what we get more of each day is teachers being asked to sub, us needing to find creative ways to do things. We'll continue to do that. But from a budgetary standpoint, we're following it closely, and I think, you know, on a month-to-month basis, if not on a weekly basis, in our offices, we'll look at this very, very closely.
Great. When you reference budget, we really did budget any COVID-related expenses. Is that accurate?
Well, we budget for...
To existing accounts?
Yes, we budget for subs. We budget for...
Got it.
Yeah, exactly.
Got it. Is there a way that we can get a spreadsheet created so that we could track this, if not month-over-month, but every other month, and we could see percent increase, percent decrease, that type of thing?
For these expenses?
I'm sorry?
For these specific expenses?
Yeah, for all the expenses, COVID-related expenses.
Yeah, we can create a spreadsheet that will show. We'll summarize the items that I have, and we will... Yeah, we can provide that. Do you want it back next month or two months from now?
I know you've got a lot on your plates. I would say, if you could do it, great, but I... You make that decision.
Okay. I'll create something that can come to the board.
Okay. And personally, you know, I thought these numbers were going to be higher than they are, quite frankly, so I applaud you both for managing the expenses. So good job. Questions, my colleagues? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item six, Policy Committee. Mr. Byrne.
Yes, we had a very productive meeting last week. If you look through some of the background, we've got additions, modifications, and deletions for over 100 policies. Coming out of committee, Policy Committee brings forward a positive recommendation to approve policies as reviewed, specifically pending clarification of Policies 167.6, 8120, 3143, 4242, 6145, 5772, and 3120.09.
Great. That's coming to the board with a positive recommendation. Does it require a second? Do we have discussion? Sir?
Yes. So the Policy Committee has received its clarification that we're looking for on some of those policies. So based on that, I'm going to make a recommendation to amend the committee's recommendation so that we would proceed with deleting Policy 4242 and keeping Policy 6145.
Okay. Now, I wish Jane was here. Now, do we have to...
We need a second on that.
We need a second on that.
Yep.
Second, great. Discussion?
Yeah, I'll give you the background on that. So 4242 was one that Niola had recommended a removal, and once we got the clarification, you know, that's why I'm recommending that we go forward with the removal. And then 6145 has to do with temporary borrowing. We will have a new policy that replaces 6145 coming after our next Policy Committee meeting, but until such time, we'll keep 6145 in place.
Great. Comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now, getting back to the original motion.
Right, so now the amended motion.
Correct.
One other note about that. One of our new policies, 8450.01, is our personal protective equipment during pandemic or epidemic events policy. I'll just give you a couple highlights on that. So during times of elevated communicable disease, community spread, or a declared public health emergency, the district administrator may issue periodic guidance and procedures that are in alignment with public health officials and/or in accordance with government edicts. That guidance will come to the board for review and potential action. The district administrator may require that all school staff, volunteers, and visitors wear appropriate face coverings or masks while inside district buildings and/or outside on school grounds. In addition, the board authorizes the district administrator to require that students shall wear a face covering unless they are unable to do so for a health or developmental reason. Policy further authorizes the district administrator to reassign students to an online or virtual learning environment if the district administrator determines that reassignment is necessary to protect the health and safety of students or others. Further, it requires that wearing of masks can also be required while being transported by the district, so on our buses. And the policy also describes the requirements for face coverings, such as what parts of the face they are expected to cover, and also that masks shall meet the student code of conduct and the dress code policies.
Now, that's not coming to the board with a positive recommendation?
No, that is. That's part of the packet.
Okay, got it. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Committee has nothing else to bring forward at this time?
Great, thank you. Questions before we move on? Okay, moving on to item seven, Insurance Committee. Mrs. Larson.
Okay, this evening, the Insurance Committee met, and we had a brief discussion regarding the dental and vision insurance. It was pretty straightforward. They are doing a 0% increase, so we're bringing forward a positive recommendation to renew our vision and dental insurance with Delta IMED, who's offering a 0% increase on the renewal.
Thank you. Coming to the board with a positive recommendation, doesn't require a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
The second item that we talked about was health insurance. Our provider, who was Associated, ABRC, and now is called USI, pretty much we have the same representative. They now have more of a nationwide backbone supporting them. They presented us with a comparison amongst six carriers, and the main points of difference were the cost, whether it be cost-neutral, where it was a 0% increase with our current carrier, and some of the other carriers did offer some cost savings. But the distinctive point was some offered a second-year cap, and others didn't. And the one who offered the largest percent of savings did not offer a cap. So we've asked them to go back to what we viewed as the three most competitive to see if they will amend their cap or perhaps produce some savings where they didn't have previously. And so we're looking to hopefully have that information by the end of the week and hold a special meeting next week so that it can come to the board at our next meeting. And so then, the last item was the wellness benefit, where we had received an update, and this is where participation garners the employee reduction in their health insurance costs, and they have to reach gold status. At this point in time, 63% of the insured population have met that threshold. The remainder have until December 1 to try and meet that expectation. And that was the extent of our discussions.
Great. Getting back to item B, referencing the employee health insurance, that's wonderful news because from a budget standpoint, we budgeted 9% increase, so coming in at a 0% increase is great news. And there may be an opportunity to get even more dollars, but we want to do what's right for the district, our staff, as well as our budget as well. Questions, comments from the board? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item eight, Building Committee. Mr. Medved.
Yes, we did meet earlier this evening, and we have no actionable items to bring forward. We received several updates on projects that are going around the district, and we're also working on a five-year plan for Fund 41, which is our maintenance budget, so to speak, and we're looking at budgeting out about a half a million dollars a year going forward, year over year, to keep up with the projects that need to be taken care of on an annual basis. So it's going to be a plan that's going to be tweaked and looked at several times a year, but hopefully it'll help keep our overall maintenance costs down in the long term.
Great. Questions, comments? Okay, moving on to item nine, New Business. Discussion on possible action regarding return-to-school plan. Mr. Stausen.
Thank you, Mr. Soderbergh. So just a couple updates. I know at our last board meeting, we just, we talked about that we would stay in our current model until the end of October just to see where things are at. Just a couple things that have come up since then. This I shared last time, and again, our intent is to maximize the number of days that students would have in-person learning without this negative impact on the school and the community. And so we're still in that AB model for middle school, high school, still five days a week for elementary, and everyone has the virtual option. What I wanted to share was that there's been a lot of questions about second-quarter learning, and so this is on our COVID page. And I had to take just screenshots, so there'll be three different slides here, but this is answering some of those questions. And one of the biggest questions that elementary families are having is they're saying, what happens if, let's say, a greater percentage of kids come back to in-person learning? How is that going to impact my full-time virtual teacher? We don't exactly know yet, but if you remember way back when we did it for first quarter, once we had all of our final numbers, all the elementary principals sat in my office, we listed all the numbers, and it was basically figuring, how can we, you know, offer this full-time virtual teacher, and whose kids can they take into that? So we are not guaranteeing anything. Obviously, if we have 20-plus kids at a school that want fully virtual, it's easier to dedicate a teacher from that school with those students. But right now, we do have some situations where one teacher is teaching maybe six kids from Amy Bell and 12 kids from Rockfield. And so we have this, which is happening right now, but for us to offer these options, we have to look at all of our staffing, our numbers, and figure out how do we make this work. And it may be, we may run into a situation where, let's say at a school, all the kids but one or two want to remain virtual. We may have to figure out something with that specific classroom teacher where they're connecting, like we're doing with middle school and high school, where that person is able to zoom in for little, you know, parts of the meeting. But we'll be able to define that more once we have our final numbers. But what I'm seeing right now, as of, about 70% of our families have already filled out the survey. That's about 2,700 families. And we're looking right now, we're trending at about 15% fully virtual. If you remember, first quarter, we were at 20% fully virtual. So the number has shifted a little bit. So... And Rhonda, if you go to the next slide. Again, this is just more information that's on our COVID page, and it says second-quarter learning. That's where all this information is. But, and again, it's just trying to explain for the elementary how we're going to figure out how we do both scenarios for all our kiddos. And then the next slide is middle school and then high school. Oops, go back to the... Middle school and high school are the same. And when we sent the survey out, I did include, or for their choice, I did include that there's this, if numbers are in a good place, that we would be five days in face-to-face, and I ask people to consider that when they're choosing their option. And so we put that out there, and we put it on the website as well, is that that's a possibility as we move forward into the fall. Next slide is, if you remember from the last time, this is area schools, and we are about in the same place as we were compared to all the other area schools. Some of the schools have switched a little bit, but basically, we're in the, what used to be critical, they just changed the language. There's no longer a critical area. They just replaced it with very high, but that's what critical was. And then the next slide is, I just wanted to be able to see what was on September 25. That's the bottom chart, and then the top one is as of Sunday. And you can see it's changed a little bit, but not in the best direction, where we have more that would be in what used to be the critical stage, but now very high for our community. Germantown's, the 53022 numbers, you know, has come... Germantown's, the 53022 numbers, you know, has come down a little bit, but it's, it's still, still pretty high. And if you, and I'm going to have Tammy speak, she doesn't even know what she's speaking about, but there's been a, because there has been a flurry of COVID activity
That I am.
This afternoon
Oh, yes.
From, between staff and students, and probably our, our highest number day on record. We actually have been doing very well in our schools. And I know from a couple of area schools as well, today was, was some of their worst, worst days with numbers. So I don't know, Tammy, you want to speak to whatever you want to speak about?
Okay. Listen here. So we had a positive case at County Line today that knocked out three staff members and six students going from that route. And then moving from there, I went to the high school this afternoon. We had two positive student cases at the high school today. One was already in quarantine, so we did not have to worry about that. They were in quarantine due to a, a positive case that they were in contact within the home, so they were already in quarantine. So there was no reason to do any contact tracing for that. However, we did have to do contact tracing for the second student. There were no staff members that needed to quarantine from that, but we did have four, seven, 11 students that we did need to send home and quarantine from that student. After the school day already, we already have one staff member from the high school who has tested positive, that I'm actually working on trying to contact trace as we speak. Have another staff member who is, got sick today during the school day, so we are in the process of isolating them and pending results. I have about five or six pending results from staff members right now throughout the Lots, it's really more in the elementary level. It's staff that are testing positive and are causing quarantines for students, students that are in quarantine. It's because of contacts outside of the school that they're needing to quarantine. In the middle school and high school, it's, middle school, it's really more staff that are testing positive and needing to have students and staff quarantine. We only had one student in the middle school who has tested positive so far, and they were already a close contact from outside of school, so they were already also in quarantine. In the high school, it varies. Not really sure where some of the students are getting positive results from. Some are from household contacts, some are not. Staff, not really sure where some of their positive results are coming from either. It could be from outside of school, or close family, but not necessarily in the school.
Great. Comments, questions for Tammy? Mike?
The, I don't, I don't know when the World Health Organization started talking about it, but they're sort of leaning towards not lockdown, doing lockdowns anymore. I think it's to try and get the general world population, how should I say, you know, herd immunity.
The herd immunity.
So can you comment on it at all? I really haven't read any decent articles on it so far.
Mike, I'm going to be honest, I have not had time to look at the World Health Organization. I have not gotten any information in that fashion from our local health department. What I do look at is our, his name is John Han from Washin Ozaki. He's the Emergency Repairness Coordinator, and he sends us weekly updates. So all the information I get is I really read that information. I have not had time to look at the World Health. I have not seen anything from CDC come through with that yet, but soon as I do, I'm sure I will be letting Brett know immediately.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tammy, I turned back the clock a couple of board meetings. I believe I mentioned, can we track this and create a metric?
Yes.
So that we can have it by school, that we could compare it month over month, to see if we're increased, decreased, that type of stuff?
Yep, so I am currently, I've been working on that at least all last week. I've been trying to work with a couple of different people to try to figure out how we can pull this data. So I actually did speak with the school nurse from West Bun, and some of their numbers, they were actually directly able to pull from Skyward based on their attendance, but it's not 100% accurate. So what they do is they pull it from Skyward and get a percentage of students out, but it doesn't necessarily give them the actual, like, number of cases versus the number of quarantines. So I've been trying to work with Justin, who's our Skyward person, and Nick also, who is able to do some kind of coding. So I've been trying to work with them this week, and also Angie Packer from County Line. So we have, I know, some samples that we were kind of looking at that I shot to Brett last Friday. So I was kind of unfortunately unable to look at it today, but we're on the verge of getting that hopefully by the end of this week.
Yeah, because it'd be great to, you know, impact the staff, impact the students, both on confirmed cases.
Absolutely.
And then on those cases that are quarantined, because I think that would be very interesting to see how many, you know, kiddos are in quarantine.
So I did kind of break that down today, and I did send this to Brett earlier, so.
And then have a run rate for, you know, since we started school, so.
And I had this in my PowerPoint, I took it out because we had so many new ones today, and it was inaccurate, so I didn't.
Got it.
Took it out, so.
So yeah, but for today, I mean, if you look at what I have, most of the situations, in the high school, it's probably about 50/50, the impact between outside of positive cases impacting our students needing to quarantine versus inside the school. KMS is probably more so outside the school as well. However, the elementary schools, it's all really mostly from outside besides what happened at County Line today. But all of the other elementary schools, it's all been due to outside cases.
So Tammy, in terms of, do you have the number of, from the start of school, how many students have actually tested positive, and how many staff have tested positive?
I don't have that right in front of me. What I have in front of me is from the 28th of September, but not from the beginning of the school year. What I can tell you off the top of my head is there has been no students in any of the elementary schools that have tested positive. They have all tested negative. We've only had one staff member in an elementary school that has tested positive. In KMS, there's only been one student who's tested positive, and they were already a close contact. In the high school, since today, I think, six, seven, eight? Eight, I think?
I think eight.
Eight or nine students that's tested positive since the end of September, I know. And there were very few before that.
Yeah.
Staff that's tested positive, I lost my sheet. In the high school, not that many. My numbers aren't on here right now. One today from the high school, one at KMS, one at County Line, and that's from, since the beginning, or the end of September. And I know there were, there were quite a few more, because there was, currently, there's none at Rockfield, and I know that in the beginning of the school year, we had quite a few at Rockfield.
So maybe by, in a couple of weeks, we'll get a spreadsheet so that we could track it by school, by staff, by kid, by student.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have that by the end of the week, actually. That's my question.
Great, excellent. Then we could put it on the return-to-school site. Wonderful. Getting back to your comment from K through five, of the kids that were tested, they came back negative. Presuming that those kids that were tested were symptomatic?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, most of the kids that were tested were symptomatic. The kids that were in quarantine, really because their parents had tested positive, none of them really had developed symptoms, and none of them, I don't ever believe really were tested either, because they didn't develop symptoms, so the parents chose not to test them.
Great. I just want to say thank you again, and thank you Brett, and for your team, and thank you to my colleagues. We turned the clock back a month, month and a half. I mean, we're elected officials, so we could take the, all the bad things that, from the moms and dads in the community, but I want to say that we made the right decision, and the plan that we have in place is very good, based on the numbers. So again, I want to, I applaud the board, I applaud you, Tammy, and your team, and Brett, I applaud you and your team as well. So wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments before, for Brett and Tammy before we?
I just got one more quick slide, and this is just, again, a reminder, if anyone's watching, and we're going to send a reminder email tomorrow about the survey. Again, we're at about, it's blank there, but, because I just checked it, at the end of the day, it was 70% received, and again, 85% choosing in-person learning. Deadline is, is the 18th, and we'll send out two reminders before then, one tomorrow, and then one over the weekend. School Board, we're still reviewing each, each board meeting. And then something for, that we're talking about, we, meaning Brenda, myself, and it will be with the leadership team, but how we establish virtual opportunities second semester, and how, how we can do it more efficiently and, and maybe better than we've been doing it first and second quarter. So it may be even a different format than we're in, but again, we'll see, see where we're at with numbers, you know, in the, in the building, so. And my final thing is, is that I know we're, we're managing this, and I think if we were in any other model at this time, we'd really be struggling at the middle school and high school. But even at the elementary, because of the lack of subs, I mean, just so, so people know, it's not perfect, and we have our principals subbing for classes, we have the secretaries covering, we have the math interventionists covering, because there's just not, when we start losing people, we don't have the resources to fill it in, and it's running, it's running people ragged, but they're doing it, and they're not complaining, and it's, you know, what you said before, Bob, is hats off to everyone who's making this, making this work, and it's not, I don't know if it's sustainable for a long, long time, but like I said, I think any other model that we would, might be in, I think we'd be shut down. And I just, I think, you know, hats off to all those that are making it, making it work, so.
Great. Comments, questions? Medvedev?
I just have a quick question, and I, if you already said this, I apologize for asking you to repeat it, but for our families that are doing this survey and do have the question of, I am virtual, but now I want to do in-person, and if everything hits the fan, or they feel it hits the fan, and they want to pull back out and go to virtual, is that a possibility?
Yes, yep, and so we have, we have not changed our stance on if a, if a child wants to leave in-person to go virtual. We've allowed that, and we're, at this point, we don't see us changing that, so.
Great, thank you.
Further questions? Okay, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Moving on to item B, discussion on action to approve facility use fee waiver requests. Mr. Stossel.
Yes, thank you. How does Ms. Altenberg speak to this?
I have one, one request tonight for the Southeastern Girl Scouts of Wisconsin. They are asking the fees to be waived for basically their elementary troops, because the middle school and the high school troops meet off-site. So it is 30 hours for the 2020, 2021 school year. It's a total of $262.50. They have used our facilities in the past, and they have been approved a waiver in the past. So it is for all elementary schools cafeteria.
Thank you. Entertained a motion.
Move to approve the waiver for the Girl Scouts in Southeastern Wisconsin, use of the Germantown School District.
I will second.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to item C, discussion on action to approve teacher contracts. Mr. Stossel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Soderbergh. We'll have Mr. Nowak speak to that.
Thank you. We have one contract to bring forward tonight. Amelia Emmerich, who's Special Education Teacher at Amy Bell Elementary School. Amelia is being recommended for this position as a result of an FMLA leave. This is a 1.0 FTE, limited term 69 days, for $17,250. We ask that you approve.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion to approve the 1.0 FTE limited term contract for Amelia Emmerich at an amount of $17,250.
I will second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item D, discussion on action to approve Start College Now MECCP applications.
I think we'll have Ms. O'Brien speak to that.
Great.
Sure. This evening, I did put on your place at the table a newly revised submission, as I have received different applications than I have in the past. So I was out of the office for a few days and wanted to make sure that you had the latest numbers. So there are seven students that have submitted paperwork to enroll in the Nursing Assistant Program for the spring of 2021. I have five students submitted paperwork to enroll at WCTC for the following classes: Intro to Programming, Auto Service Fundamentals, Intro to Hospitality, Early Language and Literacy, Guiding Child Behavior, Industrial Blueprint Reading, Blueprint Reading Fab, and CNC Machining. And then we also have two students who submitted paperwork for the Early College Credit Program, one student to enroll at UW-Moarki for Chinese 101, 102, and one student who submitted to enroll at Concordia University for Intro to Courts and Corrections in America.
Thank you.
And I also put in the board background that we did submit claims last year, because we receive reimbursement for those students who receive a certification, an industry-recognized certification. So I just put that we had 40 approved claims last year for a total allocation that we received $33,479.20.
Great, thank you. Entertained a motion.
Move to approve the Start College Now MECCP request as presented.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item E, discussion on action to approve changes to the Physical Science Course at GHS. Mr. Stossel.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to have Ms. O'Brien speak to that as well.
Sure. I'm going to turn it over to, yeah, Mrs. Becky Chandler. She is the science teacher at the high school. But before she starts, I just want to share with the board that this usually has come through IIC. And now with the Ad-Hoc Curriculum Committee, I'm wondering if we might have a conversation at the next Ad-Hoc Curriculum Committee about how we could merge those two. And I know Mr. Medvedev and I have been in conversations about how do we meld those two so that they're not overlapping, and creating some inefficiencies. So I have not yet held an IIC meeting this year, knowing that I'd like to somehow join up the Ad-Hoc Curriculum Committee. Since that hadn't started before Becky proposed this, I was going to take it right to the board, so.
Great, thank you.
All right. Becky, take it away.
Hi, good evening. I'm Becky Chandler. This is my 19th year teaching at Germantown High School. Really enjoy my time here. Coming to you tonight because we're hoping to revise our physical science curriculum. I've enjoyed it for these, for these last 19 years, but it's time to kind of update some things. So we've been looking at some different choices, and we really have our hearts set on something called the JSON Curriculum. It's something that, or the JSON Project, something that the eighth-grade science team currently uses. They enjoy it, and the students enjoy it. And if you have a minute, I'd like to then read the rationale and some objectives so that you have some more information about the curriculum. Our rationale for proposal, our students will gain powerful learning experiences through this course. The students will explore career pathways, as well as connect and hear from real-life role models in the science field. The course will allow students to be exposed to various strands of science prior to leading into a pathway, creating more course options for our students and alignment with their interest areas. The description for the course, and the course title is kind of in the works yet, but we're thinking of calling it Scientific Investigation and Exploration in Our World, which is kind of a mouthful, but it summarizes the whole thing nicely. So the course description, this course introduces basic concepts of scientific inquiry, physical science, life science, environmental and earth science, and engineering. So it kind of gives them a little overview of everything, kind of maybe keep their interest in some other courses that would be coming down the line for them. I think right now, students kind of feel like they have to choose this class, and this class, and this class, and they're not aware of so many other choices that we have. So this is going to be a little bit more eye-opening as to the different types of science study that are available to the students. Some of our course objectives are to analyze problems and solutions scientifically, solving problems of today, to integrate science knowledge with real-world situations at local, regional, national, and international levels, to make connections with phenomena happening in the real world today. And that world phenomena is something that's really pulled from the next generation of science standards. So the science standards have changed, and so over the last few years, we've kind of made changes in physical science to better fit the NGSS standards, but taking on this new JSON Project would really embody, embody the NGSS standards. Some of the course outline is available online, but examples of some of the modules that the kids and I might do are Infinite Potential and Wetlands, a Race to Restore. that the kids and I might do are Infinite Potential and Wetlands, A Race to Restore. And I really was impressed when we, Jen and I met with the curriculum, one of the developers, and how applicable it was to things that are happening. For example, the kids had to design like a water filtration system to be delivered to someplace where there would have been some kind of natural disaster. And they're currently without water. And so I just thought, wow, how applicable is that? And in the wetlands module, it talks about things, about healthy wetlands, and runoff, and, and protecting our habitats. And I noticed when I was driving around from here and home, that in some of the farmfields, there are signs up that say, this is a no-till farm field. And I thought, oh my gosh, how applicable is all this to that, because that's becoming a new trend in farming, is not tilling under in order to conserve your topsoil, and to not have so much change in, in temperature from day to day. The budget, probably the part that you all are most wondering about, there is a teacher annual membership of 250 students, and that cost is $1,375 annually. And that number could fluctuate depending on the amount of enrollment in the FTE. And we're also hoping there is a smaller option for lesser students, for up to 30 students. That costs $395. We were really hoping that we might be able to purchase that, so that I could begin using it with some students this year, and kind of get my feet wet and begin learning about it. That dollar amount, I'm not sure if I said, was $395 for the annual for up to 30 students.
Great. Thank you. And this is for next year, correct?
Correct. I mean, the, if you were to okay the 30-student, smaller one, I would begin using that with some students this school year, just, you know, little bits and pieces here and there, just to kind of, you know, gain some experience with it.
Great. And that cost would be $1375?
Correct.
Got it.
And so when was the last time that the curriculum was updated for physical science, would you say?
Well, this is my 19th year, and this is the first major overhaul like this. We've made, of course, you know, we've made changes along the way. When NGSS became published, we examined that closely. We all did, the entire science department, and, you know, looked through, what are we addressing? What do we need to address? Let's discard this. Let's add this. So we've done things like that, but it's still physical science. And it's still, as much as it is hands-on, it's kind of a traditional learning model in that this is chapter one, whereas this is, these modules kind of cover a little bit of this and that, and there are overlapping things, and so many real-world applicable things. So I'm, I'm really excited. I was so excited when we met with Deb the other day, so.
As another school would say, you can't mask your excitement.
Tatum's gone now, but yes.
Bob, I just want to clarify, it's $1375 for the 21, 22 school year, and they're also seeking an additional $395 for this year.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Amanda?
Is this in your budget this year?
This would be in my budget, correct.
So it is in budget for you?
It is in budget, correct.
Okay.
Wonderful. Other, yeah, right.
Would you say that this is more of a hands-on learning approach for our students versus the old model?
Yes. There, there is still an online component as well, but it eliminates textbook. So we'll kind of be relying upon the internet or online component to make contact with maybe some real-world role models and things like that, but more hands-on, more problem-solving, more project-based, instead of maybe like worksheet-type things.
Excellent. Other questions? Mike?
How many speakers from the outside or the real world would you expect to have per semester?
I'm not sure. I, I have one specifically that came to my mind. We've not dealt in a whole ton, but when I was reading through that Wetlands, Race to Restore, one of my friends is the state, for the state of Alaska, the state soil scientist. And so he came to my mind, and I thought, oh my gosh, even if he was on a screen and we had to zoom him in, wouldn't that be neat? You know, he's a real person. So I'm not sure how many, something that we'll have to look at, but maybe a few per semester would be great.
What the Jason curricula does, they bring in the scientists that are, oh. They bring in the scientists that are still alive and right now. And so they even capture some of them on video and stuff for the kids as well. But then there is a component where you could get that real person or whatever, like Becky was saying, and bringing them into that module of learning. So it's both, but they do have role models within each of the modules, too. So.
Would you expect the person to come in for a class period, maybe, and speak of all of what they do?
Yeah. And I think it just depends if it's a person, like Becky has resources or whatever, and that person would come in. The biggest thing is just making sure that they speak student-friendly, and don't come in above what the students would understand.
Sure.
So that would be the biggest thing. And Becky and I have been talking about that, too, just making sure that those speakers truly know that before they enter with the high vocabulary above the heads of our freshmen.
Using all sorts of acronyms.
Yes, something like educators do, yes.
Students might not understand.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Questions for the questions? All right. Say none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that. Motion carries.
I don't think you had a motion.
We didn't have a motion?
No, we didn't. But I will make a motion to approve the course changes as presented for the beginning of 2021.
It's a mask.
2021 and 22 school year, with the addition of starting this year with the 30 students.
Second.
Discussion.
Do you suppose there's, is there a unit on electrical, electricity, or power?
Sorry, Mike.
Is there, I wasn't asking you. Is there, is there a unit on?
Would you like there to?
Yes, he wants one.
Absolutely. It would have to be on Monday nights.
That's right. Monday nights, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea.
Further discussion. Say none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that. Motion carries. Good job, Becky.
Thank you. Thank you for doing all the work for that.
And thanks for your service. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 10, closed session. The Board of Education will entertain a motion to go in closed session for swing two sections, 1985-1F and 1985-1G for discussion of personnel issues. The Board may take action in closed session if necessary and appropriate, or entertain a motion to reconvene into open session to take further action if necessary and appropriate, and/or to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Move we go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Second, Tom. Discussion? No discussion. Roll call, please.
Medved?
Yes.
Loth?
Yes.
Borden?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Reiman?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Soderbergh?
Yes. We're in closed session. 803. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Drive home safe.